Good morning, everybody. We're gonna start our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. And Commissioner Godu.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Rikers County Commissioning Meeting of August 31st, 2023. Time is flying this year. We do an attendance in the room. We have Commissioner Foyle.
Good morning.
We have Allison Poskey, Chuck Nickerson, Leila. We have Commissioner Godu and myself, Brian Cheritello. And on Zoom, we have, let's see, Sheriff and Major. I don't think you can see me in there. We have Jason Smith. We have Captain Stacy. We have Drew Gates. And we have, sorry, Tom Morello as a member of the public. And I think I had everybody, right? Yeah, okay. So we're gonna start with the RFP openings and awards for uniforms and equipment.
I move to award the proposal for uniforms and equipment to Neptune Uniforms and Equipment Incorporated for an amount not just exceed $43,293 through June 30th, 2024, as recommended by the Chair.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes, Commissioner Foyle?
Just briefly, what were you? I was noticing it said it because there weren't, there were only two bids and one didn't meet the qualifications. So I just, and you referenced that it was close to last year's pricing. Do you have a, do you have the numbers for last year?
I do not. It's because they, they price out each individual item. I mean, we could supply that to you, but they price out every individual item, whether it be pair of pants, duty belt, handcuff case. So that we get a list of all that information to compare it to last year, but the increases haven't been very minimal despite inflation.
Okay. And do you know what, do you, do you know what we, obviously, we're still within budget, but do you know what was budgeted last year and what you spent last year on that?
Off the top of my head, I do not.
Okay.
We can get it to, we can get it to you next week or send you an email during the week.
That's fine. I was just trying to get a sense of how close it was, but I trust your word that you say it's, you know, it's, it hasn't gone up significantly.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, every year, it's just, it all depends on turnover, how many new deputies, because obviously outfitting a new deputy is more costly than just replacing, you know, you know, wear items that are going out. And then we just have items that just over the course of time, we eventually have to replace them.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? If not on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
I guess.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Can I vote yes? Oh, onto the consent agenda.
I move to approve the August 24th, 2023 Republic's in non-public meeting.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion, additions, attractions, amendments? There are none on the motion, Commissioner Godu? Yes, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. In our packets, we have the medical daycare, the payoff report. We have seen that. You want to speak on that?
I do briefly, just looking at, so the payout report was just for the month of July, and it looks like, you know, when we enterprise over the entire year that we should be not exceeding $8,333 a month. July, we use 7,100-ish. So, as I look at it, I think, you know, we have a number of requests today. We should just be mindful. I think it's great that we're utilizing all of the money that we have. I think that's the goal, right? To help as many people as possible. But, you know, in years prior, and I know Commissioner Chertrell, you're familiar, and former Commissioner Tom Morello, you were also very helpful in this in terms of giving, we made, we gave some payments to the, the facilities to just keep them sustained while there were not so many people utilizing adult medical daycare. But what it looks like and what we're trending is that we're going to use all the money on residents this year if we continue at the same pace. And I know, thank you to Jason Smith, who has worked hard to reach out to these organizations to say, hey, we have this money and to utilize it. But aside for the commissioners, let's just be aware of how much we're expending so we don't exceed our, the budget on it.
Yeah. Agreed.
It's a good problem to have, right?
Yeah, absolutely. And then if we get that grant, it'll just talk well. We'll have additional help. We'll be running, yeah, that'd be good. Any further questions or anything about that at all? Okay, so let's move on to payroll.
I move to approve the remainder of the consent agenda, which includes a payroll expense in the amount of $1,377,526.97 for the period ending August 26th, 2023.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Onto liaison reports. I'll go to Commissioner Foyle first.
Sure. So over at the jail, it's been, the population's at 157, and it's been just steady and, you know, operations continue. Nothing of any significance one way or the other. The finance office has, again, similarly, everyone, you know, I think we're at that point in, you know, we're over the hump of the new budget or budget season. And so now we're kind of into the steady stream of workload. And, you know, I know the finance office is busy. They're between grants and doing some, and a number of things. And, but it's been a tough week at long-term care. One thing, there's been an uptick in COVID. I think, sorry, we're all seeing it in the public, which, you know, I think we're all carrying forward right now, but it has more significant consequences and still in the COVID living setting. There is also a small outbreak of scabies, and we had some, there are some difficult nursing care that's been taxing on some of the nurses this week. It's just been a, it's been a challenging week. On a note, we have the Ernest Barker 20th Anniversary Celebration, September 14th. So that's a, and there's gonna be a celebration in the Hilton, and so that's a nice thing.
Very good. Commissioner Godu?
Nothing special to report.
Okay. So for me, I just wanna point out that I had an opportunity to go onsite to where the new building was. I walked over and checked in and actually walked over to see the progress. And it's really quite amazing, really a good feeling when you see that, all that talk over the years. And now to actually see work getting done. And then, you know, they're doing the, they're still doing the foundation pieces with the forms and whatnot. And when you sit there and you stand in the middle and then you see where they have flagged out, like the building size, the side building, you know, and it's like, okay, this is gonna be, this is gonna be exciting. They'll watch this over the next couple of years, but.
We're seeing it on models, like, you know, eight and a half, 11 piece of paper.
Yeah, yeah. And so that's to actually stand on the ground and like, really, really exciting. You know, it's, it's great. I took a couple of photos because I just felt like maybe if I take photos, we start walking, we'll see the progress over time. But very exciting. They're doing really well, so that's good. The sheriff's department, I did get a call from a reporter that wants to do a story on a new piece of equipment. That, it's the piece of equipment that actually can tell what kind of chemicals are in the bag without actually opening it. I, they're going to call. I gave Major Bashaw his number so he can actually do a phone interview. So be on the lookout for that. I think that that's great, that they're invested in showing the public what tools we're doing and sharing with the sheriff's office to combat opioids, which is great. Allison gave us a report, which was, I don't know, eight, nine blocks long. So she's, she's been very busy. And I'm sure she'll share with us the, the actual details. So anyway, good work with everything, everybody. Let's move on to the offer for grant application and payout reviews.
I move, oh, yeah.
Did you, no, no, no. Any discussion? That's okay. What do you, I know that we've had a couple of weeks to digest everything. I hope that we've had an opportunity to do so. Now, if there's any comments or what the commissioners would like to do.
Commissioner Godu? In general, I think that each of the new applications looked appropriate to me, except one that was, came in from Rochester, which is not in Rockingham County. So I don't want to support that particular organization. But each of these other ones, I think are good organizations to support. And I would suggest that we offer each one a modest amount of money, someplace in the area, five to $10,000, I think towards five. But that's my open remarks.
No, Commissioner Foyle?
I was just gonna say, the Rochester organization services some of the population in the Rockingham. So that's the, that was the reason, you know, obviously, you know, I think we could put some stipulations on. We can make a decision about it, but the reason that they, organizations outside the county apply is because it's like Easter sales. Obviously, they're, they're organized in Manchester, but because they offer services to Rockingham County residents and for adult medical daycare as an analogy, obviously, we pay for residents out of Rockingham even though they're utilizing the service in Manchester. So it's a similar.
Yeah, I can understand that. I'd like to get a little information on.
Who they're servicing.
Who they're servicing that's part of our residents. Do we know that? I, I, I didn't do a deep dive on that application, but I looked at it. I just saw Rochester. It was very generalized. It didn't focus on Rockingham County residents.
Right. Yeah, we've, we've had that a couple of times in this activity, some crossover, when somebody serves and do crossover. But, you know, if you wanna, if you wanna take that one and hold that aside, give that an extra week. I don't think we've done that. I'm assuming that everybody else is on the same page. Commissioner Foyle, do you have?
Well, I mean, just going through, me, there are some, I, that was a very generalized perspective. And so I wouldn't, I'd like to, maybe we could be a little, just a little bit more specific with respect to, because some of them, I'm not on the same page. Some of them, where we didn't make awards, the Aviation Museum. So some of them were revisited, right? So with respect to the Aviation Museum, I, we, last time, at the last round, we declined them because even though, you know, it's a rotative thing, our goal is to target, my, when I thought about it, my perspective was we should target organization, nonprofit organizations that are helping to, more in the sense of resources to underserved populations. And not that an aviation museum doesn't, isn't, you know, a wonderful thing, but that we should target the resources a little closer to serving underprivileged needs. We declined in terms of great day services. Our concern was how much of the population they were targeting in Rockingham County. And similarly, Star Island had some of the same issues. I really, personally, I put in the same perspective as the Aviation Museum. I would support giving money to the Southern District YMCA. They did receive, the reason we declined it before is because they received a significant, I'm okay to write, they received a significant amount of resources from ARPA. So that was the basis for the decline the last time. Pro Portsmouth had a second application. We have, we have not, I don't think we, we haven't approved, we were declaring an award. I would be inclined to give them an award this time around based on the, when we look at the number of applications.
They've applied for a third time.
Yes, and I don't think we've issued them any award thus far. So I would be supportive of giving them an award. And then, let's see. Dairy Community Fund. We had awarded them $2,000. And not requested, yeah, so we were still talking about perhaps giving them more. Is there any others? I was focused on, is there anyone else that you guys would like to discuss?
I have others.
Okay, so.
Are in, in here?
Well, there are, frankly, I did my homework electronically. I'm still trying to fit, I was trying to shuffle around with these pages, and I didn't find everything I was looking for. The, the applications that I think that we are to be focused on are ones that have come in since the past review. And the list that I have is the Friends of Salem, New Hampshire Recreation, the Friends of Centennial Hall, the Dairy Fund, although I wasn't aware that we had given them money before, but I still like what they're doing.
Commissioner, may I pause you for a second?
Sure.
That, there's a sheet right in front of me.
Yeah, I.
That one.
I've had difficulty with all the colors.
I have that one.
That's the one?
We have another copy of the one that's the new application.
It's the lower section of.
Oh, it's 45 minutes.
Yeah, there should be a bar across from all applications after.
Oh, it's submitted, oh, sorry, I have them. Never mind.
Yeah, they're down. I think it's nine.
The one, oh, yes. Application submitted after 11:30, 22.
Yes, yeah.
All right, so.
Yes, it's a non-for-profit financial assistance.
Great. So do you wanna just go through? Do you wanna, why don't we go in a numerical order, which, what we want to support and how much? Is that sufficient? And then I'll make a motion accordingly to, so, the New Market, are you okay going, proceeding that way, Commissioner?
Yes, I have it organized differently, but I'll see by.
Okay. So the New Market Communities Church and Food Pantry? This is what I would support. And what we've done, I think, I mean, based on where I see what we have, I would support giving them $10,000. Because that's sort of, we've been consistent in providing that amount.
Has that been the amount that we've awarded in the past to the other organization?
Yes, five to 10. I think we bumped up to 10, and I think 10 would be appropriate. We can revisit, we probably even five. But based on, sometimes they've asked for, like, the Dairy Community Fund asked for two, we gave them two. In this instance, this is 25. For continuity inconsistency, I would award, I would, I think the New Market Community Church and Food Pantry, which again, especially, they use local grocers, and their objective is obviously to give, you know, provide food for those.
And you're gonna give 10 to them?
Yep.
Okay.
And I think Commissioner Godu, you referenced the Friends of Centennial Hall. Is that one you were addressing? It's a center for arts. I would recommend doing 5,000 for them. I mean, the arts are important, but it's not as significant a need as addressing food insecurity.
All right.
Do, does anybody, I'm, I'm just.
No, why don't you go through it? I'm making notes, and then we'll look at the whole picture.
Okay.
Last one?
Yes.
Community YMCA.
So.
Of the North Shore?
That's their umbrella, right?
They're, yeah, they're separated.
They're just the passion. I would table this because.
Table that one?
And because the one thing I don't have, and I need to look at it in more detail, how much the, just with Exeter, they had gotten, they had gotten hundreds of thousands of dollars in other ARPA or COVID relief money. So given our relatively limited resources, I wouldn't be inclined to give them if they had gotten a significant sum in COVID relief money. So I'd table that one.
Okay. Pro Portsmouth?
Pro Portsmouth, again, I think it's in the same category of Friends of Centennial Hall. It's an organization that is supporting the arts and culture, but not, you know, not dealing with direct needs. So I would suggest 5,000.
How about Dairy, Land Dairy Chamber of Commerce?
Again, I think it's in conjunction, we could.
The only thing with that is it's not 501(c)(3).
Yeah, they don't qualify.
Yeah, I think.
As much as I'd like to support them.
Yeah, they don't qualify.
Right. So decline.
Yeah. How about any show of mind? That's an art second, if you need.
I thought that was a stretch myself.
Okay, what do you wanna do?
I, I pass on that one.
Pass on, where are you, how you feel?
I would put that in the same category of.
Table?
No, I think it's in the same category of why we didn't give to the Aviation Museum.
So pass on that?
Yeah.
All right. How about Catholic Charities in New Hampshire?
All right.
Go ahead.
No, by all means.
Absolutely, Catholic Charities.
So I think that, again, I was similarly, I think, $10,000 for, because they're talking about water treatment and servicing senior living.
So town that?
Yes.
Okay. How about Portsmouth Women's City Club?
I believe they, we gave them award as a subrecipient because they had a specific project for a roof. And so I, I think that they have received a sufficient award at this time that we should, I'm able this for now. Yeah. And the 10, I would give to the, they didn't submit a W-9 yet. So my suggestion is we award them $10,000. Sorry, their total funding request is 2,500. I, Sandown Community Food Pantry?
Sure.
I would, I would actually award them above what they, their request, because again, this is dealing with food insecurity, that we award them $5,000 with the caveat, provided that they are compliant with the W-9.
Right. Okay. Where else are we at?
There was the Dairy Community Fund.
Yeah. So they're asking for two to that one, right?
And there was also the CCNC Ward Senior Living.
So, okay, can we, can we go in the order of, it's, I think, easier to organize it, but if you wanna work out.
Dairy Community Fund, I just, we gave them two, and we've given others like five. Maybe we should do, give them three, to make up the difference there?
Yeah, I think that's good.
3,000? Okay. I'm light shy at Goodwill Industries.
He wasn't inclined to, there's a, they're a big nonprofit, and they, they have other, so.
So we have to pass.
Yeah. Is there anyone else who would like to address?
Um, yeah, there was the. Yeah, Pro Portsmouth?
Again.
We talked about that.
That was 5,000, because that was, again, I think the organizations that.
Okay, so I was referring back to the Catholic Charities. That's the one they had awarded Senior Living.
Yes, we.
That's right, is that what?
Yes, 10,000.
Okay.
I think we've got covered most of it. Yeah, because it was like nine.
Yeah.
Nine that were in for.
Gather has requested funding through this. We gave them $10,000 through our regular county specials.
Non-county specials, and we've also given them money under the nonprofits already.
I would pass on them because.
Because they're getting.
I didn't mention the fact, we wanna give it through county specials or through ARPA, and it was county special.
And I, I think what we have taken approach as of is, again, if on the next round we don't have more applications, then we can revisit if we wanna give a larger contribution to something. So.
All right.
Are we comfortable? I would make a, is there anything else you wanna address, Commissioner Godu?
Friends of Salem, New Hampshire Recreation.
Is that a 501(c)(3)?
Yes.
Okay, what do they ask?
We've already awarded them $10,000, which was consistent with what their request was.
Yeah, so good with that.
That was awarded in, just in October of '22.
Okay. All right. So the nine that we, we just spoke about.
And do we agree Portsmouth City Club, Women's City Club?
We're, we're tabling that one for now because we gave them $17,000 as a subrecipient to do a roof project.
Okay. All right, so let's, do we need to do this in a form of a motion?
I think we do.
Okay, do you, are you on good handle on it?
I do.
Okay, go ahead. Any other comments at all?
No.
Okay.
Okay. So I move to award Pro Portsmouth a grant of $5,000.
You want to do the, the, the?
No, no, I move to award, and I'm, I'm just gonna go through numerically. To award the Dairy Community Fund, $3,000. The New Market Community Church Food Pantry, $10,000. The Friends of Centennial Hall Incorporated, $5,000. Pro, sorry, Catholic Charities of New Hampshire, $10,000. And Sandown Community Food Pantry, $5,000, provided they provide a W-9 and are compliant with the application requirements.
Okay, second. Notes have been made and seconded. Any more discussion? If not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Very good. Let's do, we're. We're, travel and training request form requirement. Yeah, yeah.
I move to implement the travel and training request form in addendum as a requirement when requesting approval from the Board of Commissioners for travel and or training that exceeds the current cost.
Sure. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I just, I mean, I appreciate, I know that this was, Leila, thank you to you for your efforts to chat. I think this, this will really help us in sort of streamlining and analyzing travel. And, you know, I think we've all seen some of the troubles happening in Stratford County with travel and budgeting. And I feel that this is a way to have additional checks and balances. And I think.
Good job.
Thank you.
Any further comments at all?
I know, Leila, you were instrumental in this, so thank you.
So on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. We're on to the finance office. Whitley, Whitley Engagement Letter.
Whitley.
Whitley?
Yeah.
I move to approve the engagement letter from Whitley LLC for preparation of Medicare cost reports for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023, and authorize the Chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Just to come, this is how you mean, last year, we utilized their services. Next year, we should be doing this 100% on our own. We're gonna meet up with Stratford County, because they've had a longstanding, you know, practice of doing it themselves. Medicare cost report, we may or may not want, that's the next item, may or may not ask to utilize their services for next year. It's a little bit more complicated as far as submission wise.
All right. Sounds good. Any further comments? Not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you. Onto the second engagement letter.
I move to approve the engagement letter from Whitley LLC for preparation of the Medicare cost reports for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023, and authorize the Chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
Ben, no, we shouldn't oppose.
I move to approve the TV. I move to approve the TV bank account modifications as outlined in the memo from the Finance Office dated August twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance.
Second. You remain a seconded. Any discussion?
For. Travis, can you, I just have it some, I mean, I, it seems like it's just mostly housekeeping.
It is. It's mostly housekeeping.
Was just trying to understand. There's things, so can you explain, um, the movement away from the bed tax?
Okay, so, so what happened was before, um, for whatever reason, um, my predecessor had set up a separate bed tax account to pay the quarterly, uh, bed tax. It's also known as the Nursing Facility Quality Assessment Return. It's basically our five and a half percent tax we have to pay D R A um, on a quarterly basis for also called net patient revenue. Um, I also submit a copy of that return to, uh, D H H S as well. Um, so that normally would be about two hundred fifty thousand dollars for the first three quarters. For the last quarter, it would end up being because of pro share.
Right.
Because dairy considers pro share of net patient revenue. Um, that would normally then jump to like five hundred, six hundred thousand some odd. Um, so to me, it made no sense to keep a separate bed tax account any longer. Um, as you can see, the account itself is not getting credit with a interest or anything like that, so.
But it looks like the account, account is, I'm sorry, interrupt you, the account is empty.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, that's what I mean. It had been dormant, so this is a houseclean item with that. Um, just that you can't really close repurpose accounts without having a vote by the board.
Right.
So, this is houseclean stuff. It was, you know, kind of lower on the totem pole to get taken care of, especially as far as the bed tax account. But we do have need of a, another account to split out the current two internal service funds from one another.
Okay.
Um, because we do have active cash transactions go on for comp abs fund and also for, uh, dental fund. So this breaks those two funds into their own bank accounts. So make it a bit easier.
How do we figure out in terms of, I mean, because that, that account has two million dollars in it, right? Uh, so how do you figure out how we separate the dental fund from the comp abs?
Because of all the other general ledger account tracking, and we've actually, for interest crediting purposes, because we actually credit interest revenue between dental and comp abs. So we've had a historical tracking of both funds. This is just to purely, you know, go back to truly having them meet for their own separate account.
Probably.
We used to, uh, when we had citizens, individual citizens' accounts, um, many years ago, for each of the internal service funds, health fund and comp ab, you know, dental fund, comp abs, sit down their own separate accounts way back when. So some reason they got combined after citizens' accounts went away.
I assume this will make it better.
It'll make easier for.
Okay, yes.
And calculating that interest and all that, because you'll see it directly posted on in that separate bank account, so.
And then the health fund.
Yeah.
That's like five grand and it's going into the seven million dollar account.
That's been kind of like dormant for years too, because we used to have, um, a different, um, F S A, F S A account um, that we would actually front load the dollars into, and then the company would pull from, they were authorized vendor would pull from. And I think maybe my predecessor said that as a separate account, so that they wouldn't be touching against the larger health fund account. While we have other protections in place that we've enacted, uh, ACH positive A and what have you. So there's not really a danger of, of, you know, having another vendor. In fact, the current vendor is actually pulling from the main health fund account. So there's no reason to keep a separate pay flex.
We don't need an extra insurance.
No, we don't. Yeah, and obviously, the more accounts you have, the more, you know, analysis fees you're going to have from the bank. So you can kind of reduce the overall number of accounts, but accounting.
Okay. Thank you for that. I always confuse it. I appreciate it.
Further discussion? If not, uh, on the motion, which you're calling?
Yes.
Which you gotta do?
Yes.
I vote yes.
All right, thank you.
Human Resources, uh, exception request.
I move to approve an exception request to Personnel Policy seven dash three, new appointment rate for a finance office employee J T as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Sorry. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
Great news. It's great news. It's really a great news for the finance office too. Uh.
Yes, there's some projects lined up.
Sometimes life learns out.
Let's go to M N A program.
I move to amend the narrative related to the voluntary M N A training program. Addendum approved August twenty fourth, twenty twenty three to reflect that the program length is ten weeks and not three weeks, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second, motion has been made. Seconded, discussion? Okay, on the motion, which you're going?
Yes.
Which you're going to do?
Yes.
I vote yes. Years of Service, N H A C County Government Awards Event Venue.
I move to approve the twenty twenty three Years of Service Awards New Hampshire Association of Counties, N H A C County Government Awards Events, to be held at the Exeter Inn October twenty sixth, twenty twenty three, November second, twenty twenty three, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Sir, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Which you go do?
Only the, um, I mean, um, I haven't been to one, and I'll be attending this one, hopefully. Even though one of them is on my anniversary. Did my wife know? Would that count as an anniversary dinner?
Well, you'll have to.
I'd like to entertain in future years that we might go to another facility, you know, kind of spread the wealth. Follow, and maybe there's some unique things about your ex that is particularly, uh, good for this event, but it's just.
I can speak to it just briefly, or Allison, you can.
Yeah, the Exeter Inn is more of a, um, local place because people are coming off their shifts and going directly there. There's not a lot of other venues, and we don't want people to have to drive, uh, distances. And they're very accommodating, and, um, we've never had it before. This will be what, our third year? And they do a really nice job, and people can get off shift and go directly over there, and then from there, they just go home versus having to drive this out to Portsmouth or something like.
Just be here already.
Correct. Most of the majority are here, or the second shift they're coming in, or third shift, you know, it just makes it easier.
Well, okay, but there, there must, there might be some other venues to consider as well.
There, it's very limited in this area. We'd have to go out to the Portsmouth area to be able to host, like, you know, a hundred people or sixty people. We have to break it down by two dates because of the capacity, and also taking into consideration the shifts, having those shifts covered. So we break it out so that they have coverage on the floors as well for the different departments. But I, I will look. Something will pop up, but that seemed to be the best location that we were able to.
I mean, I will say that the, I, I know Allison and her team really does a wonderful job, but the Exeter Inn does a wonderful job. It's, uh, my, people love it. It's a great experience. It's nice to get the recognition. They serve a really nice three course meal. It's. It's elevated.
Okay, so.
Exactly right.
Oh, my gosh.
Hopefully she doesn't surprise you with tickets to. Okay, so on the motion, Commissioner Gudde?
Yes.
Commissioner Porter?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion two.
I move to authorize the Senior Director of Human Resources to sign a contract with the Exeter Inn associated with the twenty twenty three Years of Service Awards, uh, New Hampshire Association of Counties Government Awards Events, and to authorize utilization of the county AMX project to secure these reservations with a thousand dollar deposit on behalf of the Board of Commissioners.
Second, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on this one? Not on the motion, which you're going?
Yes.
Which you gotta do?
Yes.
I vote yes. Travel and training request.
I move to approve an out of state travel and training request for a human resources employee J H to attend the National U K G Conference held November sixth through ninth, twenty twenty three, at an estimated total cost of two thousand eight hundred and forty nine dollars, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, on the motion, which you're going?
Yes.
Which you gotta do?
Yes.
Yes. Travel and training requests, National Ergo.
I move to approve an out of state travel and training request for a human resources, sources employee L F to attend the National Ergo Conference held November eighth through tenth, twenty twenty three, in Las Vegas, Nevada, at an estimated total cost of twenty six hundred dollars, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
It's nice that these are staggered so that your, uh, office doesn't get designated.
Further discussion? If not on the motion, which you're going to do?
Yes.
Which you're going?
Yes.
I vote yes. Long term care, adult medical daycare grant request.
I move to approve an adult medical daycare grant dated August twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, to Silverthorn for an additional client G P at an amount of twenty five dollars per day, two days a week, as recommended by the Senior Director of Long Term Care Services.
Second, motion has been made and seconded. Discussion? Not on motion, which I go to? Yes, which you're going?
Yes.
I vote yes. And then another grant request?
Uh, let's see. I, uh, move to. I move to approve an adult medical daycare request, uh, to Silverthorn for additional clients. Hold on. Um, page three.
Yeah. You don't have a page?
No, I just need to pull it. It's fine. I have it. Sorry. Just have to get the numbers right. Um, thank you for your indulgence. Uh, dated August twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, to Silverthorn for an additional client H D for an amount of twenty five dollars per day, four days per week, as recommended by the Senior Director of Long Term Care Services.
Second, motion has been made and seconded. Discussion? Not on the motion, Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Which you gotta do?
Yes.
I vote yes. Polaris Group, one time account, receiving.
I move to approve the Polaris Group agreement for one time accounts receivable write-off and adjustments, and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Long Term Care Services.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Oh, which you gotta do?
Uh, the Primex review made some suggestions that were not completely followed. Uh, and the contract that's been presented to us, uh, under the indemnification section. Uh, I can, I can describe. It says each party should, should be struck out, and it should say Polaris will indemnify defendant whole harmless. Facility, and then we need to add in facility, its officials, agents, volunteers, and employees, and strike out the other and its officers, directors, employees, agents, affiliates, successors, and permitted assigns. Um, it, it's just language that Primex had suggested that, um, some of it got in. The Primax suggested, and this was, um, not taken care of. I'd like to see that taken care of before.
So whose contract is this?
That is with Polaris Group. Um, we have numerous contracts with them already, and the board has previously approved the language already um, with, uh, Primex, um, suggestion, which, um, Polaris Group will not adopt all of the language, like many business associate agreements that have already been authorized in the past.
So this is the case that I take it or leave it?
Well, also, just on the issue of some of the whole parameters. Obviously, Primex, the extreme end of Primex is, Primex's job is to assess uh, be at the extreme end of protective to us. So, of course, they're going to try to eliminate any liability on our behalf. The contract, as it's written, Polaris is like, you know, their position is not that they're not taking indemnifying or, um, taking on any liability. It's just mutual. So when I look at it, it's, you know, pretty fair and reasonable. And, you know, I don't think that, and is consistent with many, you know, businesses and companies where, yes, of course, Primex makes these recommendations to be as protective as possible. But when we look at liability and that they, they're maintaining their liability insurance, they're, they are indemnifying. You know, it's mutual indemnification, um. I think that the contract as written is sufficient, and it's consistent as, um, you know, as Administrator Smith said, very consistent with a lot of contracts. We've worked with Polaris Group, um. They've been very, I think, um, it's been a good, uh, beneficial relationship for us, and I feel comfortable.
May I, may I add, Commissioner, that the joke of this, um, of this contract is really to do A R cleanup. Um, the contract is minimal. It's twenty five hundred dollars. Um, and it is to look at from the very beginning to clean up some of the old A R accounts that go back ten plus years since, um, we've used P C C. Um, the man hours that it would take for Kathy to go in and balance out and generate a report to make a recommendation to the board to zero those accounts out is just, you know, n- not worthwhile of her time. Um, and so that's why we, uh, worked with, uh, the Finance Department, that this has been an outstanding, um, item on their list for us to do some cleanup, and that's why we're moving, would like to move forward with this. Um, Kathy?
Yeah, and they will be submitting us with a report of what they have, you know, found in those years, and we will bring that before the board again for approval before we actually go through the write-off process.
Okay. Further?
So are you saying that Polaris has seen this, uh, these changes and has decided they're not, not going to, uh, sign with the, with the changes? Is that the position that the Polaris has, or have we not even presented this to them?
Oh, no, that they've already made their, they cannot change the indemnification clause per their legal guidance, um, on their end. And so that's why we, um, are looking at mutual.
Further discussion? Okay, uh, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Which you gotta do?
No.
I vote yes. Okay, um, travel and training request, leading edge conference.
I move to approve an out of state travel and training request for four long term care employees, J S, K M, K W, and J W to attend the Leading Age Conference held November fifth through eight, twenty twenty three, in Chicago, Illinois, at an estimated total cost of eight thousand six hundred and thirty nine dollars, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
You'll second me and seconded. Any discussion?
Kindly requesting that, you know, you get a group photo at the bean.
Is a national conference, and, um, it really brings so much, um, knowledge and just really partnering with, uh, what is going on in our industry. And so, um, it's, it's a wonderful conference I attended last year, and hopefully we'll be able to bring more additional people this year.
I was just going to emphasize that. I remember you, Jason, coming back from the conference last year, really, um, enthused and excited with a lot of the sort of cutting edge, new ideas, collaboration, so.
Great.
It's great that we're, uh, bringing assistance living. Administrator.
So on the motion, does any more discussion, uh, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Which you gotta do?
Yes.
I vote yes.
May, may I just add one further comment, um, and that, um, because there are hundreds of thousands of people attending this conference. I put the request in, um, I don't have, um, access to a particular hotel. They actually assigned the hotel to us pending, um, uh, where we fall into signing up. So, uh, the, the price may vary on the hotel. That's why we listed, uh, the variations of the hotel rates. Um, and once I know which hotel we have, I will come back just to confirm all of that.
It looks like the range in the hotels, as I was looking, reviewing it, was like one ninety to two fifty.
Right.
So it's not, I mean.
Okay. All right, Health Connect Business Agreement?
I move to approve the Health Connect's business agreement for the software subscriptions agreement approved by the board on August twenty four, twenty two, and three, and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Long Term Care Services.
Second, motion has been made and seconded. Discussion? Which you gotta do?
Uh, Primax has suggested that we have our council review this because of, uh, potential HIPAA violations. So has our council reviewed this contract?
I'm going to turn it over to, to send a hand to that. Jason?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Um, I'm brought to your attention today to see if, uh, I need to reach out to legal. Um, that would be an additional cost if we did that, so I'm just seeking either, uh, the board, um, agrees to do that or looks at the contract for approval.
Okay, so. There was, there's also, in addition to that suggestion, there was a paragraph that they want to strike out that, um, was not struck out.
Awesome. Yeah, Commissioner Coyle?
So this is, so what is the access from the, can you explain the software a little bit more, Jason? I think, isn't it fairly limited to connect with your, the? Or go ahead.
The, the information will, um, be integrated with our P C C or E M R system. This, this is related to what was approved last week with our infection prevention software. We don't have an infection prevention, um, software system. It's all been done by hand. Um, and so this will allow, uh, ease of interest, uh, ease of input into a system with recording. Um, and so this will allow uh, ease of interest, uh, ease of input into a system with reporting and up-to-date information for the clinical team. Um. The information is only as good as what is inputted into the information by the staff.
Okay. Further discussion?
So it's really, so there, do you believe that there could be some HIPAA concerns if there was a data breach?
The HIPAA concerns that I would have would be our staff leaving a piece of paper at the nurse's station opened up, um, talking about the individual's name and diagnosis. I think the breach would be more of a, a, a person uh, on the inside than on the outside.
So.
So, yeah.
Go ahead. No, you're not.
I, I'm just gonna say, is it time sen-, is this time-sensitive, Jason?
It is not time-sensitive um, uh, at this moment.
Okay.
I, I mean, so it doesn't sound like the data that's being input is. I mean. Is it a HIPAA issue, the data, the, the, the information that's being input into through the software?
No, the only issue that could arise is if there's a HIPAA breach, uh, say like the firewall, or there is PHI that somehow breaks through our IT infrastructure. And I'm sure Jude uh, can speak on that behalf. Or Robin, I see is on here as well.
Yes.
But it's the same exposure that we have with our current systems in any of the systems, finance system, uh, to, I'm sure the sheriff uses software as well, so, um, yeah.
I, Fisher go do that, Jason.
I, I. I wanna follow Primax's recommendation and have counsel review this. Uh, with all due respect to everybody's opinion, it, it seems that we like to get. In, in turn, our attorney's opinion on whether or not we're exposed unreasonably. Primax seems to think that we need to review it. And also I'd like to get that, rid of that paragraph that they said to uh, remove, so I'd like to table it at the moment and ask for. Um, counsel to review.
And so the motion table.
Uh, uh, it's fine. We, it sounds like it, there's not a rush. So if we, Jason, if we come back in a week, are you okay with that? We did blink for a week?
Absolutely. Um, would you like me to reach out to um. Uh, Jason, uh, at the attorney's office, or do you want me to work with Leila on this?
I think, Richie, if you could probably just reach out directly to Jason, I think that would be just fine. I mean, that's my.
Yeah, yeah, I have no problem with that as well. That's why I asked, no, it's not sensitivity, I, you know. It doesn't hurt to have uh, legal take a court work at that. So, but, did you second this motion? Okay, so the motion table second. Um, any further discussion on the table? Actually, it's not debatable, so Commissioner, I vote yes.
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, Jason, so you have your stuff to do there. Um. Sheriff's Office, grant application.
I move to approve an application for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of thirty-six thousand three, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the sheriff.
Second motion debated, seconded, is there a discussion?
One question.
You're gonna go to.
There was an item that Dairy Police is, is asking for. It's called Data Pilot Field Acquisition Acquisition Device. And this device is used by detectives and officers on the spot. To be able to uh, extract data from someone's cell phone. Cables, they're connected. And. I'm just quest, my question is. How do we prevent? Or should we be concerned? That it's a violation of someone's rights of, you know, how do they get permission to do that? They don't have a, a search warrant?
Well, you can't.
This is in the field. So I'm just, I don't know, I'm just, I'd like a little more information on that device, that's all.
I can tell you how it, how it works in the.
Okay.
In the real world, which is, um, you can't just, even though the device can extract it immediately, it's not like what, either they have to get consent, right? Or they go get a search warrant, and they hold on, they seize the phone, get a search warrant. And then once the search warrant's approved, then you plug in, and, I mean, that works itself out because if it's not, you know. Works itself out pretty quickly because if there's an unlawful search, you know, there's gonna be a motion to suppress the evidence in court, and that will play itself out. But with respect to. You know, there, I don't think, just because you can access that immediately, even in the field, it doesn't mean, it's either through consent or field can be filed for an emergency. Warrant, search warrant. And just seize it, you know, field can be back at RPD.
Anybody in the sheriff's office wanna add anything?
Well, I guess, we don't really, we're a pass-through administrator for these grants. We don't have any direct oversight or support of what these communities are using for it. But I think, I think this particular device, I am aware of what it does, and I think the understanding is that even when you do give concern to search a phone. And somebody hands their phone over to us, we now wouldn't, they wouldn't have to take it back to the agency, bring it to an agency that has celebrate data dump, and, and you're in possession of their. Their phone for days, if not up to weeks, while you're waiting to extract that data. So in the event where there is a search warrant or consent, it would allow them to quickly do it and return the personal property to the person that they're extracting the information out of, but. We have no oversight for these, uh, for the equipment that's done for these grants. We're just the administrator of the grants for these communities.
Thank you.
So basically, the county can't get, doesn't qualify for these Jack grants. So, but some of the towns and cities can apply for it through the county, and we take like seven percent for administrative fee or something like that. So, yeah, so.
Further, further discussion? You all say? Okay, so on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
You should go to.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, all right, so the topic had updates, so uh, we're gonna go, and then we go with um, two gates.
Good morning, everyone. Beautiful day in the neighborhood. Uh, all's well in facilities. We had that major steam shut down as scheduled last night. At three PM, we, the whole plant was shut down. There was no hot water in the nursing home or the jail. Everyone was really cooperative and understanding, and they got three major repairs taken care of while the steam was done, so I'm very happy. Even shorthanded, these guys, they just really. Give it their all, so it was really great. Very proud of them. Um. We're working on the showers down on the B side at the jail. They, they finished, they essentially got them demolished yesterday and today. They're still. I mean, Monday, Tuesday, they're cutting them up. The plumbers are in. We've got the uh, floor being cut next week by Mason Cutters, and the block will be starting to be set on September eleventh, so. That's moving right along. We're very happy to see it. Um, coming closer to fruition. The uh, on the new building, Army Corps granted permission last week. The wetlands issued, the, the prime wetlands they were reviewing down by the driveway. The only thing we're waiting on now for the new driveway is DOT. A couple of weeks ago, they said they were about a month out, so we're hoping to um, get their hopefully permit, perhaps their comments by the middle of September, so that's. Uh, a nice piece of work that's moving along. Um, well, number four. We are, uh, the, the survey was done. Tuesday, the information's been sent to the attorney for the easement that we need to request from our neighbor. We'll do that concurrent with. An offer to test wells for the ten um, people whose property touches ours within that wellhead protection zone. The DES is asking for a few additional tests, monitoring wells, et cetera, related to the pump test. We may have a small. Um, three or four thousand dollar change order coming forward next week. I'm trying to nail down the numbers on that right now. And um, other than that, as Commissioner Chiracello noted, it's, it's very exciting to stand up there and see the. The um, edges of the building. Developing. It's very exciting, so. All's well. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Jude. Uh. May I ask a question on the new business, or no, is that the read?
Read.
Go ahead.
Uh, Jude, in the, in the new building, uh, I noticed that there's a um. A request to have Warren Street. Redraw some of the design on the height of the ceilings. And because ductwork wasn't accounted for in the right, or some changes were made. My, my question is, who pays for that? When, when they're being asked to do a new design or to revise their drawings?
It's part of our contract with them at this time. There have been no additional requests.
So that'll be included in what they, when they're being.
Part of the ongoing design effort. I think it's an, a customary piece of every project. The ductwork was a result of some last-minute steel changes, you know. In the house that Jack built, so essentially, it's, it's part of the design effort, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There's nothing Jude doesn't have in mind at all.
I know, I know, I doubt it.
Like, when you think about all the elements of a build and like all the different moving parts, and every single time we, we throw a curveball, anything, Jude is like right on point. She is.
Okay, but it's not intended to be a curveball. It's really a question.
Curveball, it's a question. I'm just remarking how.
I'm gonna go to therapist department, and I will know, uh, Chief Deputy Sawyer, I believe, is. Is also present, just for the record.
That's actually. That's actually Superintendent Henry. We invited him to come up.
Oh.
Maybe from the meeting, but he forgot to bring his coffee, so, he forgot to bring his coffee, so he brought one for himself, but not one for the sheriff or the major, so.
All right.
Nothing really new to report this week. Um, we are doing backgrounds on some dispatches. Uh, we're doing some interviews with uh, some bailiffs, because we are down on bailiffs over there. Um. We got a. Uh, we put it on our sheriff's Facebook account. Um. Um, Janet Stevens um, sent us a nice letter. Um. Commended us on the work that we've done on Route one twenty-five. Um, after that meeting they had with all the local police departments and uh, sent us accommodation, uh, recognizing the hard work of uh, Lieutenant Marshall Bennett. Uh, Marshall is really into these high-rate grants, and it's uh, a good thing that it was really nice of her to send us all of that, so we did recognize Marshall. Otherwise than that, everything is fine. Have a great week.
Thank, thank you, Sheriff. Uh, I'm gonna go to Jason Henry, since he's there, and I apologize uh, for mixing it up. I, I just can't see that well from this distance.
He's got more, hey, he's got more hair than Sawyer.
Well, let me tell you something, from here, I couldn't tell.
Good, good morning, everybody. Um, couple of things, uh, New Hampshire Bolton reached out to me, because they're doing article on the cost of medication. For offenders and, and the rising cost, because the state just asked for a lot of money in their budget to cover the cost of medications. Um, so I did say, yes, the costs are going up, and we're seeing a more acute. People, and I let them know. Uh, that the capacities the counties have to actually deal with these people, and they're probably, they're gonna use one of our pictures of our one medical cell we have. Probably come back and do some more articles to inform people about uh, the, what's going on in the community, and I'm trying to push more things onto the jail, so that's actually very positive. I have a meeting with the ACLU later this afternoon, because some, some language must be put in to do more stuff with MAT that the jails actually can't do. Or not, without a lot of money. Uh, but another good note, we're either gonna be hiring, as long as they pass their PT on Friday, it looks like five to six uh, ladies or females have applied to us. We've been getting a, a very large. Uh, spike of, of, of females coming in, so hopefully five to six of them, that would be fantastic. And um, that's all I have.
Great. All right, thank you. And I go to Kathy Stacey.
Good morning, everybody. Not much to report. It's, you know, same old, same old, but I do wanna tell you, um, you should open up your email, take a look at the retained bills with the Association of Counties. It's fifty-nine of them. It, it, I mean, it was a busy session. It continues to be. Um, and just so you know, I have been appointed to the Retirement's Benefit Commission, which meets every Thursday up until the week before Thanksgiving. To try to work on uh, changes or whatever to the Group Two. Uh, benefits, so that's my report.
All right, so speaking on that, did you say we had this fifty-nine retained bills from last year, or fifty-nine new LSRs?
Retained.
Okay.
Retained.
So, so obviously, and, and this is the, September's the month where they start to create new LSRs, so we'll be on the lookout for those too, right, Kathy?
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And it's usually like eight hundred a year, so.
And. Just Kathy, thank you so much for always keeping your finger on the pulse. It really helps the whole, the county as a whole, and we appreciate your efforts.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Wish everybody a happy, uh, you know, weekend. I know it's Labor Day weekend, and I hope you all enjoy it.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to, I'm gonna go to um, Jason Smith.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, just uh, working on a few issues around infection prevention. Um, as Commissioner Coyle mentioned, we'll get into detail with that. Um. Uh, on some good news is our Assisted Living Week will also be celebrating our twenty-year anniversary, uh, so we're really looking forward to that. Um, so all week long, we'll be holding events uh, for the residents, family, and staff, so we're very excited. I also uh, provided you with um, the risk management plan that we've been working on for the past year. Uh, it's been a work of love. Uh, per se, uh, finally getting it done, and so um, we have submitted a draft copy for your review. Um, it is a working document, live document, and we'll be continuing to update that and monitor that. Um. I just wanted to say thank you over to Autumn over in HR, uh, Jessica Wendell, our Public Relations and Community Outreach Manager, and myself did the Rock Talk this week, uh, so our podcast. Um. I, I'm, she does an amazing job. Um, I know that I'm not a great public speaker, so uh, I will. Hopefully it turns out all right. Thank God we're editing it. Um, and then finally, uh.
Did you put in a good plot for us? Did you put in a good plot for the Commissioners?
Yes, of course. I actually, I said thank you to you, of all three of you numerous times.
Okay, all right, just checking.
Uh, let's see, and then finally, um, uh, Jessica, as you know, um, really works hard on our community outreach efforts, and uh, we have invited the Seacoast Area Networking Group, which is uh. Members of Southern New Hampshire and Massachusetts that um, all work in uh, aging services, and so many of them have not visited Rockingham County and our long-term care services, so um. Our assisted living and nursing home in Ritz-Skill Free have a memory care, so we're excited to uh, host that group um, to come and learn more about um, what we do here every day. Uh, at Rockingham County, so we're looking forward to that um, on September twelfth.
Thank you. Thanks, Jason. I'm gonna go to Robin Burney, who usually has tons to share with us, so Robin.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Just a few things today. Uh, we are continuing to work on various projects all over the county. We have some things cooking at the county attorney's office, as well over at the Department of Corrections. And in the nursing home, um, also getting ready to kick off some more training, which I know you all love to get in your email, uh, in your notifications, so those will be coming out in the next few days. And I'm looking to do some purchasing, buy some new computers, and keep things moving. That's about it.
Thank you, Robin, and, and we know, I think we duly know that Robin is here. I didn't get her at the very beginning for attendance, but. Um, I wanted to say that, and um, also that we did get an email from uh, Pat Conway saying she couldn't be here, so just wanna make sure that, that, that was, that was told to Robin.
And she did a process, so the, all the work and things are happening in the county attorney's office, it's just so. Um, even if not here in person, she's still.
She updates us, yeah. All right, Chuck, next.
Um, obviously busy as usual, uh, like Commissioner Coyle said. Um, we did just recently get another hundred forty-four thousand in from uh, the State's Opium Abatement Trust Fund. That represented the third so-called distributor settlement that comes from, let's see, McKesson, Cardinal Health, and Marisource Bergen. Um, there is a little bit of a holdup as far as the, like, five other settlements that we're hoping that distribution, distributions would start in July. Um, I'd actually reached out to the contact person that's on the E-Pay notices, because it says Opium Abatement, doesn't tell what settlement.
Hmm.
So I reached out to that person. I guess they forwarded my request right to uh, Jim Befetti, so I guess if I want updates, I guess I'm gonna be emailing Jim Befetti. Uh, so he did email another update. Obviously, he said there's, is two other settlements. There's a Malincourt. Settle in, but that's being held because of the bankruptcy that's going on with them, and then we kind of know and have heard what happened with Purdue Pharma. As far as that, the judge rejected that, um, you know, settlement, and now it's. You know, who knows where it's really.
Let's see where that goes.
Yes, but at some point, there should be some money, probably years down the road, coming from that, so, and I um. Did put together uh, like, a report format for us to give to the HHS to say, we have this much money in, this is what we did with it in fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, so it's like our twenty-twenty-three submission. So it's just informational, check the box, so. Um, besides that, just uh. Busy. Thank you for approving the exception request. We're looking forward to the individual uh, coming back. In a fit, self-help capacity and be able to really work on some of the key projects. She's a key person helping out with the cost reports too, on our side, so.
Great.
All right. Allison?
Um, just working with um, two or three of the division directors on um, some significant stuff related to the.
Um, just working with um two or three of the division directors on um some significant stuff related to the departments and HR. Um, we did finalize um the anti-har- anti-discrimination and harassment training with Attorney. Uh, Mako, who will be starting next week, um just waiting for the slide decks to come over to kind of review those. And um we did send out the schedule for the ODDs and their um secondary uh. Staff so that they know and can um look at those dates and um move that forwards, oh, we can get back into compliance. Um, and we have a couple of wellness things we're trying to nail down that we can run from October through December using our sign-up funds that we have. So we're working on some of those ideas, but it's super busy right now, and thank you.
Very good. All right, did I forget anybody? Uh, Laila?
Hi.
Hi.
Good morning. Um, yeah, just real quick, I did finish up the uh the travel and training. On, so I'll be sending that out to everyone, all the um division representatives and their administrative staff. And I will be posting it on the website as well. Um, and I just want to remind everyone that the deadline, submission deadline for next week's meeting agenda is tomorrow, because Monday is a holiday.
That's right.
Enjoy your long weekend.
Thank you. Um, anybody else? Did I forget anybody? I think we got everybody, so, okay. Thank you for the thought and head updates. We're gonna go to, uh, is there any new business?
We have a number of things on the, are you saying beyond what's listed on the agenda?
Yeah, 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 on that, is there anything new business? Anyone wanting to discuss before we get into the long term? All set? All right, so let's jump into the long-term digital services, digital marketing presentation.
Respect to that, I think uh Jason and Jessica are gonna actually come, are you guys gonna come down here? So I would just suspend that portion, maybe we could even take public comment, do um i- items. Two A, two and three, do public comment and then go back to the digital marketing presentation.
So you want to do, you want to public comment first?
Well, let me go to, let's do the.
Walk-in mandatory harassment.
I will to designate the twenty-twenty-three anti-discrimination and harassment training sessions as mandatory for all employees as recommended by the Senior Director of Community Resources.
Second, motion made, seconded, uh, any more discussion? If not, a motion, Commissioner Gado, yes, Commissioner Gado, yes. And then we're gonna do the walk-in.
Yes, I move to approve an innate administrative transfer dated August twenty-ninth, twenty-three, transferring one inmate from Stafford County Department of Corrections for Simonton, New Hampshire RSA. Thirty dash B colon twenty-one and uh as recommended by the superintendent.
Motion's made, seconded, any discussion? If not, a motion, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Gado, yes, and I vote yes. You're gonna, just jump around, we're gonna go to public comment while we're waiting for. The uh digital marketing presentation, so I'm gonna ask if anyone in the public wishes to speak, just raise your hand. And if not.
TNT.
Nothing? Okay, nothing from the public. All right, so we are.
Gonna.
Let's see. We, yeah, we're gonna wait for the presentation, so we're gonna take a quick minute break while we wait for Jason Smith to come down. Uh, so hang tight. I lost you to that, and then Jessica. Okay, Jessica, take it away.
All right, we got there. So um Jason and I just wanted to give you this presentation um in advance of the um. Digital marketing award that we'd like to make, um, just because there's so much that goes into digital marketing. And I really want you all to be able to understand what um is going into the vendor that we um are going to select. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of background. Um, as you know, in in marketing nowadays, it's really more of like a human approach. Um, people. Choose to go with services that um really connect with them on a more emotional level. And a lot of that has to do with the amount of touch points a potential customer might have with um with a product. So, you know, the the more times they see you, it just builds that awareness. So when it comes time for them to um go down that. Sales journey and buyer's journey, um you're the brand that's really top of mind for them. So um, you know, the trend nowadays is that older adults really are a lot more tech savvy. So digital marketing is where we feel we need to focus um most of the marketing budget for this year. Um, all that, we did do the brochures and um we do have some updated print and sales collateral. But really what we want to focus on is this digital realm. Um, it is a very crowded market and our competitors do have um all of these um resources. And they spend a lot of um time and effort on some of these digital marketing um channels. So in order to stay competitive, we feel like it's really important to um. To keep up and explore that as well. So I just put this in here as a typical sort of customer journey, um going back to those touch points. So when an older adult or um their, you know, adult child starts to research senior living. They might type into Google, you know, what's the difference between assisted living and long-term care? And maybe a blog post pops up, or they see a webinar. Um, maybe they get something in the mail or an invitation to an open house or social media. So that's where they, you start to build that uh brand awareness, that credibility, that trust. So that when it comes time for them to filter down their top contenders of who they would like to, you know, go onsite, take a tour. Um, download the brochure, attend an event in person. Um, you're really top of mind for them. And then the last stage in the customer journey is that decision stage. So that's sort of the typical funnel that people follow. And these are some of the initiatives that we have done um in the past few years. So we've really built up the social media and the website. We launched um social media pages. We um built up the website, um which I presented a while back. Um, we have the blog, newsletters, sales collateral, and then some of the community outreach efforts um. As well, so that's sort of where we are now. But we do have some limitations and some pain points as well. Um, you know, I am only one person doing all of this, so um. It's some of the areas where I feel like I need additional resources is that um. Really the data collection, the market analysis, paid advertising is huge nowadays with um. With uh search engines, um, marketing automation, that's where, you know, you might sign some. Fill out like a contact us form one time and then you get emails from that organization for the rest of your life. Um, that's, that's something that we don't necessarily do, but it's a good best practice. Um, and then you can see some of these, um, some of this data on these graphs, th- these are our website visitors here. So um this is going back the past year, so you can see um that we have increased our website traffic of, you know, a. A little bit over the past year, but um you can see these spikes are where, you know, we might have posted something on social media that got a lot of traffic to the website. So I think that we can do better. I think that we can get more traffic to the website. And then this graph is something that I pulled from our um CRM that we use. So this is our referrals. This is showing um where our leads are coming from. So admissions tracks that, and um only six percent of our um. Leads are coming in through that email web inquiry, so again, I feel like we can do better at converting those website visitors into leads. Um, so our solution to that would be to partner with one of these agencies that has submitted a bid. To really craft um a comprehensive strategy that increases visibility and helps us reach a wider audience of seniors and their adult children. So some of the goals would be to generate leads uh through targeted campaigns. So with using a digital marketing a- agency, they can really target people and audiences. By using, you know, data and research, um, they can also help us nurture those relationships um with some of those automation efforts. And um all of that will trickle down to help us increase our occupancy rates. These are specifically the services that we were looking for with those bids that um. That we some uh sent out, so I just wanted to go through and um briefly touch on what these mean. Um, so you have an idea of um the services that a digital marketing agency can provide. So most importantly is really that strategy and analysis. So a um marketing agency will really help us identify demographics of our audience and the, and the channels that they're using. So they can help us really target um where we should be focusing most of our efforts, whether that's Google Ads, whether that's social media. Um, you know, we can, we can guess and use some of our best um insights and knowledge. But this company will really have um, you know, the data to to back those decisions. They will be able to use um search engine optimization or S E O. Um, which helps ensure that our website will appear up at the top of um search engine results. So um if someone types into Google, you know, senior living near me, we want to make sure that we have those keywords in our website. So that we're showing up at the top of the um results. Email marketing and drip campaigns, uh, those again are those emails that will nurture leads. And um send out automated emails based off of specific behaviors that a potential customer um is doing. Pay-per-click advertising, that would be um search engine advertising. So, you know, usually when you go to Google, those first few results are paid sponsored ads. Um, we don't do that right now, and I think that it's definitely something that we should be focusing on. And these companies are really experts in in doing that. Social media, you know, we do have a very robust presence on social media. Um, but targeted social media campaigns can help us reach a much wider audience than what we're reaching right now. And then a website audit will just really make sure that our website is user-friendly, um accessible, easy to navigate. Um, accessibility for websites is really huge right now. Um, and what that means is if someone um i- is, you know, vision impaired, um. Uh, it, or or, you know, something along those lines that they can um see, see the website and access the website um. Easily, and then really most importantly is um that this company. Will monitor and measure our results for us, so they will really dig into the analytics of um. Of the campaigns and will have a good understanding of what's working and what's not, and make adjustments as needed. Um, you know, we do have access to some analytics, but, you know, I'm more, I'm more the creative side, not the analytics side. So, you know, they're having a, this resource really digging into that, um, will really help us make decisions. So this will sort of be broken down into a couple of different phases. Um, the first phase will be that brand discovery and positioning in the market. Um, we'd like the company to do a, you know, consultation, to really do a um brand analysis. And uh make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of our objectives, our vision, our mission. And really develop that marketing strategy for us. Um, so they'll define goals, identify channels, develop a publishing schedule and marketing plan. And then um give us that target market and communication strategies of how to reach those audiences. And then um the creative production, that is where they will um design. Templates, social media graphics, collateral, um email marketing guides. And then um I think it's really important too to have like an official brand style guide as well. Um, that's something that we don't really have, that I haven't created yet. I think that, you know, we try to be consistent, but if I were to ever leave, or, you know, if I, if I was on vacation and we needed to post something. It's really important that everyone knows, okay, this is our tone of voice, this is the fonts that we use, this is, uh, this is the language that we use. And then um these companies also typically have a um. Ongoing uh retained services, so we ideally would like to work with this company for at least six months using their services. Where um they will do that audit of the website, optimize the website, continuously do keyword research and analysis. The competitor research as well is really important. They will um provide us with monthly services like consultation calls, production services. Um, and then continue with that reporting and analysis. Um, so that's real, that's everything that's built in to um. To those um proposals that we received back, and that's why um we want to partner with one of these agencies. Because, you know, as you can see, there's so much that goes into having a robust um digital marketing um initiative. So um we're really looking forward to um selecting a vendor to work with and really improving our um marketing campaigns.
Right.
So uh, you know, it's definitely moving us in a different perspective, a different way, you know, more of a real targeted marketing effort, which is, I think, something that. Um, hasn't really been in existence here as far as I know, not that there hasn't been marketing strategy, but this is really. A true targeted marketing effort with a whole market plan, so.
Yeah, yeah, for me, I mean, uh, being a real estate agent, what I do, all of that is, they've been talking about this for years. So I understood every little thing that you mentioned. Uh, a lot of real estate agents, companies, brokerages are doing just that, because they have to differentiate themselves.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and you have to invest in digital, because you can attract potentially more people that way. Versus the old-fashioned, those sort of early shows, you know, so I like the idea a lot. Um, also, what comes to mind is, you know, I'm watching the nightly news at seven o'clock or six-thirty, you know, all these ads are. Pharmaceutical, so they know their audience are older. So this makes sense, if they can identify, and like you had mentioned, that data is important. Today, it's incredible what data can bring. You can drill down to say, I want an audience of sixty-five-year-olds that have been in their homes for X amount of years, I mean, you can drill down that, that finite. So that's a good idea. The only, the only concern side of it I have would be, uh, and obviously we all want this to be extremely successful. My question would be is, you know, how many beds available do we have, and does the lack of nursing staff? Also affect that, you know what I'm saying? So it, it, it's almost kind of, you gotta, we gotta work on this toothpick.
So, so I think um there, there's a couple of different approaches where this would benefit of, benefit um the community. Where we consistently have admissions and discharges on our skilled unit. And, you know, individuals that may be in the hospital uh needing short-term rehab stays, um their loved ones don't live in New Hampshire. They, we have many family members that live out of state. Um, and so using the internet and looking and searching for a community and i- is a huge benefit. Um, so, you know, we have several beds that consistently um are open. Um, there's rotation happening all the time, uh, so I see marketing really helping with that. In addition to that, that's one of our biggest feeders into long-term care. And, you know, my goal is to continue with staffing and really try to open up those closed units eventually. Um, in addition to that, one of, I know you have, she, she always says.
All right, that's all right, we want to hear it.
But very excited about, um, is our assisted living, and that really is another feeder into our community. And and our assisted living is consistently full, um, but, you know, individuals move over to the nursing home as well. So I, I think that what's really nice that the website will help is to build. So I, I think that what's really nice that the website will help is to build our waitlist. That will really be the introduction into our community. And we can massage those people on our waitlist and invite them to open houses. We can send out communications. You know, we can, you've called that drips or whatever. Drip campaign, you know, just continuously massaging and refreshing and providing awareness and making contact to feel that relationship. And so I, I think it adds value to the entire marketing initiative because there's a lot of families that don't live in the central area. And yes, our biggest word of, of marketing is word of mouth. But there's also a segment that doesn't know of Rockingham County. And they don't know that we're a five-star rated facility. They don't know all the different levels of care that we offer. And I think that by having, and continuing to invest in digital marketing, will just add more value through the years.
I also think that this will help us appear like a really attractive employer to potential employees. Because I think that employer branding is really important as well. And so potential employees, when they go to research, okay, would I like to work at the Rockingham County Nursing Home or a different nursing home? And they see how wonderful our community is. It'll be, will be a more attractive employer to them. And, you know, we can certainly work with HR and do, you know, campaigns that are driven towards potential employees as well.
I mean, I, I think it's gonna be successful. That, like I said, I don't know how, if it's fully successful, I don't wanna be put to a spot where we don't have, you know. I know Steve's got a backbone, so go ahead, Steve.
Well, first of all, I think that our marketing campaign is very good that we've done so far. It is, the website is nice, it's consistent. And all the friendly materials I've seen have been designed well. And I, I think that that's to your benefit, Jason's benefit, you know, that you've done a good job. My question is, what is the goal? What problem? You're gonna, I, we haven't gotten a guess yet at how much money we're talking about, but I bet it's not cheap. And what is the, the goal? You know, what problem are we solving? And how do we measure whether or not this is a value, you know, our return on investment? Essentially, I, it, it appears that we're looking for something, a, a solution to increase customers, residents to come in. And we have a waitlist. We, I mean, I, I, I don't see that as a problem. We don't, we're not having a problem marketing. I recognize that it's coming from hospital referrals rather than from, you know, social media and, you know, through electronic, which is the, the new trend. But I, I'm trying to figure out what the problem is that I'm trying to solve.
So, so we have a waitlist for Medicaid, for long-term care beds. But we rely on our skilled rehab and to bring in revenue. And so by investing into digital and more social media, really supports our skilled rehab initiative and also our long-term care for the assisted living. So our assisted living, we have a, a aggressive census number over there. And also, it's not just Medicaid. We have casemix of private pay that we also have to support over there. So by, one of the things that I think the county is, has always been known for is that we're the fourth farm. We are the ones where individuals go with that don't have money. However, our business model is that we need to have private pay to come in to help support some of, and offset the Medicaid individuals. And so, and especially in our assisted living. And so I think that this program will help really make our assisted living is gonna be one of the state of the arts, where I could be paying twelve thousand dollars a month for assisted living in a private institution, community, or pay five thousand or six thousand dollars a month and still have the same types of services in the same type of environment. We're trying to create awareness that we are just as good as the other communities and that, in fact, we might even be better. And we won't, once you spend out all your assets, we're not gonna say goodbye to you. We promise we'll take care of you in our many different levels of care that we offer here. So.
That's a nice way of saying that.
It's value creation.
Right. And, and so we, we are kind of, how I see us is that, you know, I, we get referrals all the time for our assisted living in the nursing home because individuals in assisted living have run out of money. And all of a sudden, there are too much care in assisted living environment. So now we get referrals to the nursing home because they're Medicaid eligible. And so why can't we market ourselves as, come to our community to begin with? We promise we will take care of you from the very beginning until even if you run out of money. And oh, by the way, we can support you in our assisted living. If you have a fall, or you have a stroke, or you're sick, you can come into our skilled rehab unit and go back to our assisted living. Or after you come out of our assisted living and your care changes need, we have long-term care available as well. So it's kind of creating more awareness of, oh, Rockingham County, there are so many people that don't even know we have an assisted living community. They know that we have long-term care. So I think this would help with that.
If this were successful. And next week, you get ten calls for skilled rehab and ten calls for assisted living. Do we have even the availability to, to take those folks in?
Well, with the skilled rehab, probably not all ten, but maybe probably five, half of that. However.
We don't have those.
Things move so quickly here too. You know, I mean, even this morning, we had five discharges, or, you know, four or five discharges. And then we have five admissions coming. So with that continuum, it's really, there's always so much turnover. There are always folks moving from assisted living into long-term care. And so building this list of qualified leads, not just, oh, let me, you know, be a referral from a hospital, but someone who actively is like, Rockingham County is the place that I want to go, and they'll be ready when we call them. That's, that's what we're trying to do here.
We want to be known as the first choice. Because right now, we're not known as the first choice. Because we don't have a lot of marketing campaign to show that we're out here. A lot of people don't even know we exist. So I think that by really promoting more of our community and our services, we will become the priority, the first choice for many individuals. We're also not so close to the hospitals. I mean, we want to expand our market target. Exeter, yes, but we have Portsmouth to consider. We have the Seacoast, other areas in the Seacoast to consider. And we really want to start really promoting more of that to really become the premier health center for, for our aging individuals in Rockingham. At least that's my take on it.
So what's the level of investment?
So.
But where?
It, it varies. It varies. There are some vendors that were up in the sixties, but then there were some that was in the twenties. They all provide different services. And we were going to, we want to just show you why we want to do this. But I thought it would bring value to just providing some education and background to really show and demonstrate the need for a service like this. But also, you know, I think the, one of the vendors that we've been looking at, you know, we don't want somebody working from home that this is just their side gig. We want a professional to be managing this for us. Yeah, a team that supports, that also works with other long-term care communities and knows the industry. And so, you know, I think that there is a range. There's a recommendation that Jessica and I are presenting next week to you.
Okay, so I'm unclear. Will you say there's summer in twenty, summer in the sixties? Is that twenty thousand a month? Sixty?
Oh, no, altogether.
Yeah, I have no idea. That's what I'm trying to get.
Per contract, to do the whole service.
Contract for a three-month period of time.
Six months. And then do all the market analysis and the research and build brand design and all of that. All of the services that were, there was the upfront initiative and then the six months after.
Is six months gonna be enough?
I, I would say. I, I would say no.
If we're gonna invest in it, let's get.
I, I was thinking, because like I said, I knew every bullet point that you've had because in real, the realtors definitely invest in this. This is the way you get clients, right? Because everybody's doing digital. So the question is, if I'm gonna spend, you know, if I'm gonna spend, I'm just using it as a big example. I'm gonna spend sixty thousand, it will cost me eighty thousand for a year. Or I'd rather spend the eighty, you know what I'm saying? Right, than to get cut off because I'm worried, like just when you said that you're on vacation or something happened, like who's gonna take over? So a year is, I think, sitting down with a, a year with someone, a specialist can actually help us. And that really gives us a real flavor when we do the analytical side of things, like where are we getting these leads? And, you know, what's, what's actually working? That will give us a better understanding.
We were presented with six months that could be extended, but then that will also, we've only budgeted for a certain amount for this line.
Okay, that's fair.
So, you know, it, maybe we trial it for the first six months. And if we have success, then maybe we do a line item transfer or come back and just say, you know, we'd like to extend the contract for another six months until the next fiscal year. But, you know, I, we will present that to all of you.
Yeah.
My overall concern is the return on investment. You know, what are we gonna get from it? And I understand some of what we get is long-term.
If I get one.
How do we measure it?
If I, if I get one private pay, that'll pay for this and more.
Yes, so your revenues are gonna, your revenues will be better.
It's, the ROI is one.
It's basically a point. It's, it's three months.
If you wanna compare private pay to Medicaid, take that difference, multiply by year, and you can cover.
But also Jason's point.
Just even that.
That we're a five-star, you're a five-star.
We need to.
If that was out there, we may attract more private.
So, you know, with, with that being said, I, I, I understand your concern with any type of digital. How do you value that? But I look at it as three months of private pay would cover this expense. And, you know, I, I think that the potential revenue stream coming in and the awareness, and just to be up to date with our competitors, you know, you know, their national chains. And, you know, they, they invest a lot into their social media and their website. But I think that, I, I think we need to take our approach very carefully and look at things. Jessica does multiple things. And so, you know, between updating the website to social media, to brand development, to public relations, to monitoring the C R M system, to the newsletters, and setting up events for family members and education sessions. I, I think that it's just, might be an opportunity for us to really have some more exposure on top of everything else.
Now, would you be looking to, to rebrand like logo specifically for the nursing home type thing? Like, like what Jason's got on his shirt is one thing. But they, they sit there and say, we should create different, different logo with different colors to attract, you know, I don't.
It might, it might be a recommendation that they have, but I think that if that's something that was recommended, we would certainly, you know, have further conversations.
Some of the counties have done, done that. Changed Maplewood Nursing Home, yeah, they've rebranded it. But I, I'm very proud to be part of the county. And I think that, I, I think our employees are proud to be part of the county. Yeah, with the logo and the symbol. I mean, maybe it's a recommendation, but with that being said, I think it's pretty impressive that we have a five-star rated and one of the only five-star rated county nursing homes.
Yeah, let's stay Rockingham County. That is our brand.
Did I answer your question?
Yes.
I did, okay.
So what can I need from us?
Go ahead to go in.
Right, and next week, Jessica and I will be back to all of you with a potential proposal and to answer any more questions. But I, you know, Leila brought up a good point of, you know, we have all this data and what's the best way to share it with all of you? And so a presentation and just to have a pre-meeting, just to kind of go over, what, what, what does the future look like? What are we doing? What are the challenges? Where do we want to spend that investment of marketing dollars? And just advance more initiative to build better public relations, build a solid waitlist with private pay, casemix, V A. And, and, you know, and great, yes, I understand what our, our mission is and our values. But we also need to align with the financial stability of the organization and balance that out so we can continue to support our employees with salary increases, invest in our employees, educate our employees. So it, it, it should help in a sense, how I feel.
All right, awesome. Thank you, Jessica.
Perfect, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. So, all right, well, I think.
Very good.
Thanks for your time.
I move to enter into non-public return to ninety-one A call and break.
Motion made, seconded on the motion, Commissioner Godu. Yes, Commissioner Foyle. Everybody have a great day. Take us out.
Wait, it's the time's ten fifty-eight. We are back in public session and we address two different non-public issues. And I move to seal all the minutes indefinitely because they could adversely affect the reputation of someone other than this board.
Second. Motion made, seconded on the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes, Commissioner Foyle.
Yeah. With that.
Having no more business in front of us, I'll take a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we are adjourned. Say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay.